My name is Bill Upton, Vice Chairman. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country.
Come forward.
May we pray. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, as the sun sets through Balsam Gap, we thank you for the beauty of this county. Lord, from the heights of Mount Guo to the level plains and even here to Old Mount Prospect, we thank you for the privilege of gathering to do the business of this county. And we ask your blessing on these commissioners as they consider the matters before them. We pray that you'll give them wisdom and discernment to decide matters well and for the good of all. Thank you, Lord, for the privilege. Thank you for the freedom that we have. And in this season of the year especially, we pray that we may be particularly mindful of the needs around us, to be generous and kind, even as you have been kind to us. In your name we pray. Amen.
We have one person signed up. Monroe Miller, if you will come forward, please.
I don't see anything on today's agenda calling for a correction in the November 20th minutes. There are three instances on pages 305 and 306 where David Francis, whose current job title is Administrative Program E evaluator, whatever that is, is referred to in minutes as a program administrator. The error evidently began when Francis was listed as a program administrator on the agenda for that meeting. The salary for an administrative program evaluator is $85,015.40, the same salary David Francis had when he said he was resigning in August. I know that David Francis changes job titles and job descriptions faster than a chameleon changes colors, but according to Kathy McClure, David Francis's job title was Administrative Program E evaluator during that meeting. Please make the job title correction to the November 20th meeting minutes. David Francis is again listed as a program administrator in today's minutes, items five, six, and seven. What is this all about? That you commissioners are going to pour another quarter of a million dollars into the James Weaver Kirkpatrick III Super Duper Sports Complex in Jonathan Creek when you have already dumped $1.6 million into that property? What is this Haywood Advancement Foundation that is going to spot $200,000? That is a loan to the county, loan the county this money, and the county will have to pay it back in 2022? What started off innocently by moving some dirt over by Publix and transferring it to this property has turned out to be another $244,927 dirt hauling project run by David Francis? Who pays for this? You and I will. I think we would be better off if the county just leased this land to a farmer for another year for $5,000 so he could grow some corn for his cows. I appreciate your allowing me time to express my concerns.
Thank you for expressing your concern, and we'll take those comments under advisement. Do we have others that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none, we'll move to constituent concerns. Brandon?
No, I don't have any. Just a week away from Christmas and would like to wish everybody in the county a Merry Christmas and hope everyone has a prosperous new year.
Okay, same comment from me. We hope everybody has a Merry Christmas. Parades we've attended have indicated spirits are up in Haywood County. And, you know, the thing that would help everybody the most, be sure that you do something to help other people. My joy is seeing kids get coats, ringing the bell for Salvation Army, taking fruit baskets out to needy families. This is, to me, this is the most important thing at Christmas. So instead of buying a present for yourself that you don't need, help someone else.
Kevin?
Good work, Bill. I'll just, you know, watch y'all say at Christmas, everybody.
You know, we've had a few constituent concerns and county manager and I, Kevin and I, we've been working on those. And just want to thank everyone out there that's, you know, had these little Christmas luncheons and everything that we've been invited to and, you know, we've tried to make them and try to get out there and appreciate the employees and to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Administrative Agency reports. We have Lynn Collins, if you'd come forward, please.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Just wanted to take a few minutes to update you on the tourism program and let you know how we finished our past year and where we are currently. If you look at the first handout you have, you'll see that that's a year-over-year comparison for 21617 versus 21516. And as you can see, the bottom line, we finished the year 20% ahead of 201516. And this report you'll note is the 3% report. Now, if you recall, we do collect a 4% occupancy tax, but that's broken down into two different funds. We have the 3% fund, which provides us with funding for the TDA Office, the visitor center, and marketing the county overall. And then we have the 1% fund, which goes back to the zip codes where it's collected. So if you turn to the second page, you'll see the breakdown on the 1% collections for the year. And that also is year-over-year. If you see the total received year-in under the zip code, the 1617 number is in red, and you can compare that versus the 1516 number. And you'll see that each of the zip codes did very well and finished the year on a positive note. Probably the most glaring changes year-over-year for the zip codes actually were for Clyde and Lake Geneska. Clyde's funny, it's like, well, where are we getting all that money? Because their money has gone up a good bit. But that primarily is from, like, Buffalo Creek Vacations and from Major's Estate, who has expanded their offerings, and both have gotten a lot of national attention. So sometimes we forget that those properties that are out in the country are, you know, in that Clyde zip code. And with Lake Geneska, the big change there is that for previous years, they had been determining who should pay the occupancy tax and who was not obligated to pay the occupancy tax. Because if you are there staying at the lake and you have booked through your church, you are not obligated to pay the occupancy tax. So they decided after meeting that perhaps it wasn't their responsibility to make that decision, but it was the responsibility of the group. And so they changed their policy and started charging everybody occupancy tax. And if the group is eligible for a tax rebate, then they have to file that rebate. So consequently, that has increased Lake Geneska's collections. And you'll see here that they finished the year at 9%. Previous to that had been running about 4% annually. And I can already tell you that this year, the current year that we're in, they're up to about 13%. So we're really seeing some changes across the board there as far as the zip codes. And that last line on the bottom gives you the breakdown of how much each zip code collects on an annual basis. So for the end of the budget year, Canton was at 8%, Clyde at 2%, Lake Geneska at 9%, Maggie at 50%, and Waynesville at 31%. So we have seen some fluctuation in those numbers throughout the past few years. And then on the last page, just to kind of give you the economic impact of the tourism expenditures in Haywood County. The expenditures for the year were $178.60 million. It's a 6.59% increase over 2015. That accounts for $38.45 million in payroll and tourism employees, over 1,800 people directly in Haywood County. On the state tax receipts, it's $9.96 million. Local tax receipts, $6.67 million. And this is the, the next one is the number I know you all always like to hear. And this, sometimes I give it to you per household, but this is actually broken down by resident. So the tax savings per resident by having tourism in Haywood County is $272.07. This past year, Haywood County ranked in the top 10 counties in the state with the largest increases in visitor spending. We were happy to hear that. Also, they ranked number seven out of 96 counties that saw direct tourism employment growth, at 5.6%. So that's just a brief synopsis of the tourism industry in Haywood County. And I can tell you right now, as of where we are to date, we're about 17% ahead of last year's budget currently.
Cold weather has helped us in Maggie, I'm assuming.
Oh, yes, absolutely. We're thrilled to see it, after the past two years especially.
Right.
We did see, we did notice in October that because of the hurricanes, we had a lot of cancellations. And the first two weeks in October, we were down about 13%. And we were a little concerned about whether or not we would be able to recover that, but we did. We actually ended up about 2% ahead of last year's October.
Lees were later, too.
Yes. So that helped.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to make some comments. You know, I'm the TDA Board Representative for the Commissioners, and so I'm at the meetings and watching what they're doing. And just want to say thank you, Lynn, for the work you all do and your staff. You've had some changeover with your staff, but we had an opportunity to visit with Britt-
Brittany? Brenly and Ben.
Brenly, Brenly, yeah. And last Thursday night, I think it was. And it seems that they're bringing more enthusiasm and more energy and more ideas and everything. So you all do not rest on your laurels. You continue to work and continue to try to prove the experience in Haywood County to draw more people. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great report. Okay, the North Carolina Emergency Service Letter Regarding Level 2 Trauma Center Report. Greg Shupin.
Good afternoon. I've also got Mike Street with me, her Deputy Director of Operations. I couldn't begin this, this agency report without thanking you guys for a few things first. Over, this year has been a monumental year for emergency services and all public safety agencies in general. This public safety training facility that was constructed at the community college has been fantastic, and everyone is training there. And it has taken us to a whole nother level, and we appreciate that. Of course, the new base that was built for emergency services right beside the sheriff's office is much appreciated and is meeting and exceeding our needs there. And then finally, in July, you approved our mass notification or our emergency communications plan, and that allowed us to also purchase a mass notification system called Everbridge Nixel to communicate with our citizens whenever there's a disaster. And we have taken that, and quite a few members of the staff and agencies within the county, including the municipalities, have turned that into such a fabulous tool that is not only being used for disasters, but also just to let folks know about street closures, you know, road closures, inclement weather and things like that. It has been a really nice addition to what we've been able to do, and we wanted to thank you guys for that. Finally, then, talking about two things here on our emergency reports, Winter Storm Benji. Boy, did they, they really kind of missed the forecast just a little bit on that.
We were calling for a dusting, I believe.
Yep. Commissioner Upton, we were supposed to get, I believe, a dusting to one or two inches.
One or three inches.
Yeah. And so, of course, that's what we were prepared for, and if you can imagine, we watched the weather probably as close or more so maybe than a lot, quite a lot of folks. However, we did, we did miss that. Wanted to highlight a few things about that, that storm, and then also share with you some lessons learned on our part. Number one, we saw upwards of 16 inches in some places and around Haywood County. Anybody know what the highest recorded snowfall for Winter Storm Benji was in North Carolina? It was actually 25 inches on Mount Mitchell. So that was pretty cool. I thought that was an interesting fact. But we did see 12 to 16 inches up along certain areas of the parkway, and mostly, what, about eight to 12 down here around where most folks live. But the main part of the story was that, number one, that did catch us off guard, and we didn't, we've got to pay attention to that. That shouldn't have caught us off guard. And I'm going to talk just a little bit about that. And it caught us off guard because when you have this type of storm, power outages and limitations in travel can cause the citizens and the patrons of the county to have, to have a whole lot of trouble. And, you know, while snow can become, you know, an economic engine for Haywood County, and we love the snow, it can also, without proper, you know, information management and good communication with the citizens, you know, it could be, also be a negative thing on that side. So the sequence of events that is supposed to happen here in Haywood County whenever a major event occurs is that emergency certifices notifies all the county department heads and the critical stakeholders, and we host a conference call or even sometimes a face-to-face meeting to share information and to share emergency response plans. Emergency Services is not responsible for law enforcement or fire protection or any of those services. We are simply the coordinator of information so that everybody hears what each agency is doing whenever that type of event occurs. And so that's the most important thing we do. And then we activate what we call our Emergency Operations Center, right there at the sheriff's office beside the 911 Center, and we monitor the conditions, and we monitor information coming from all those agencies, and we share those things. And then if it gets worse, of course, we can get them more resources to do their job. And so an example of that could be that maybe the sheriff's office required more deputies or more law enforcement officers or more fire engines to support a particular emergency. We would be the agency that would be able to get those resources outside of the county or even outside of the state if necessary to support them. Okay? Of course, that didn't happen during Winter Storm Benji. The things that we learned, we actually responded to 342 emergency 911 calls on December 8th, which was that Friday. That was a 24-hour period. The typical response is about a third of that. Okay? So we did see an increase in the call volume. But here's the critical thing that we, that we did not see. 24,000 people out of power just in Buncombe County for over two days. The impacts all around us, Buncombe County, Jackson County, Madison County, Transylvania County, all of these counties experienced heavy damage to their power infrastructure, and we did not. And I apologize if any of you actually had your power out. There were 500 to 1,000 folks or so. To them, that was a very important outage, but to us, the numbers were, in fact, very small, and that's my point. But the lessons learned that we-
We have any idea why? I mean, I noticed that, too, that we had a small number, and every, on the map, everybody else had a large number. Are we doing a better job keeping?
You know, I always see, what is that they call that Duke Energy does with the cleaning of the, the rideaways, the power line rideaways?
Right. I know, I know HEMC really focuses on that, and they do, I don't know about Duke, but I have HEMC, but I've heard that they have a priority on keeping the rideaways clear. If you do that, then trees aren't going to fall.
Everybody says that HEMC is the best. And I hear that regionally. So I think that and Duke Energy maybe plays right along with those things. The town of Waynesville also does a power, a great job. You know, they have an electric city there, so we do, we do deal with three providers. And it seems like that must be the, the thing that really kept us, kept us going. And so that, hats off to them. The other hats off was to NC DOT, who I think did a great job keeping the snow moved this year. There's been times that we've all seen in the past where they, that they have not been able to keep up. And even with a storm that took all of, all of us by surprise, they did a great job this year. So those two factors, I believe, were the, the two things that, that kept us moving and safer. The other thing about the story is we, we realized that we needed to do a better job with understanding exactly who should be on our conference calls and what agencies should be. And many of the agencies are in the room here, so it's not just public safety agencies, but even tourism development is one of them, and Haywood 211, the, the three-digit number that folks can call for non-emergency information here in the county. All of those folks, we asked those agencies to be on the conference call so they can hear what's going on. So we learned that we needed to, you know, really straighten up our numbers and get those things in order, and so that's something that we've been working on. So kind of a near miss for us, but something we're trying to capitalize on was Winter Storm Benji, to try to do a better job, continue to try to do a better job next time with that. With respect to, I think, you know, there was an attachment about Mission Hospitals' Level 2 Trauma Center renewal designation. Just wanted to give you a little bit of feedback on it. The first message is, we have a fantastic relationship with Haywood Regional Medical Center. I know that this board works closely and has, you know, there's been a lot of activity with regards to the hospital over the years, and it's our one and only hospital, and we're proud of it. They do a really good job at taking care of the citizens of this county. If you haven't been a patient there, you probably have a family member that has or maybe even both. And we hear a lot of good experiences, and we continue to do that. We take, we have about 11,000 emergency medical calls per year, and about 85 or so percent of those calls, we take their, those patients, and that's our families and our friends. We take 85% or so of those to Haywood Regional Medical Center. And that won't, that will not change. We hope that never changes. However, that 10 to 15% of the patients have an acuity or a medical condition that may just be a tad beyond the capability of a local hospital. And that's nothing against our hospital. That's the same situation that we have anywhere. There's, it wouldn't make good business sense to have a Level 2 or a Level 1 Trauma Center in every single county. We're only about, like, 27 miles door to door?
27.3 from hospital to hospital.
27.3 miles door to door from our hospital to the Mission Hospital's emergency room. And we're proud to say that we work well with them. About of the 1,800 trips that we took some of our citizens to Mission this year alone, 300 of them met that level where it was a traumatic situation. So we had about 300 patients that were trauma patients that were taken to Mission for that very reason. And so we even talked to Mr. Harker Road today, the CEO of the hospital, to get, you know, some of, some information with him about, about what, how does he feel about the Level 2 designation at Mission? And he said the same thing. He said, "We're a team, and that's what we look at in emergency medicine. It takes an EMS system. It takes first responders, law enforcement. It takes a local hospital that does a great job, and then it takes a trauma center for when those conditions meet that, meet that criteria as well." So we are, at Emergency Services are in full support of, of this designation renewal. And that's what we had. Anything else, Mike?
Just came along if anybody had any questions.
Mr. Shupin, I would like to comment that doesn't require, excuse me, does not require any action of the board unless you choose to make comments. It's basically what they've done is sent out a letter requesting comments either for or against, but they're not actually asking for a recommendation from the Board of County Commissioners. So it's just individual desires, if you want to, or if you want to do something as a board, you could do that as well.
Board comments?
Yeah, I guess I've got a couple of comments as far as the storm's concerned. Usually when they don't talk about it much, that's when you can get the big ones. When they talk about it for a week or five days, it usually fizzles out. So anyway, the trauma center or the Mission Hospital, I mean, that's just kind of a continuation of what's been going on. And, you know, they are a much bigger, much, you know, the handle, the, kind of like the triage area for the whole region. And so, you know, we're lucky to have them that close by because when you can't, or when it's a more serious injury that, that requires much more action or whatever, you know, they, they can provide that where our, our hospital does not. So, you know, I, I think that's just a continuation of what we've been doing for years right there.
It is. To my knowledge, there is no recommended change. This is simply a renewal process for that hospital as required in the administrative code.
And I think our hospital does a good job of knowing when to send people on to Mission for more extended care, things that they're not, not capable, things they really don't want to delve into that, that Mission specializes in. And I'm sure, I've had heart problems, you know, when you're going to do bypass surgery, you go to Mission. I think we all understand this. There's a lot of things they do, but there's a lot of things we do that can, we can catch things early and do some preventive things without going to Mission. So 15% is not bad.
It's, it's not, and I think what sums that up best is one of the criteria for the trauma center, and that is 24-hour immediate coverage with general surgeons as well as orthopedic, neurosurgery, anesthesiology, emergency management, radiology, and critical care. All of those things is what Mission is able to provide on a 24-hour basis.
Yep.
And so that, that's why, you know, we need the, the local hospital that does a fantastic job, but also Mission that has that capability 24 hours a day.
Yeah, I've had a couple of experiences in the la, not just in the last little while, but in the last few years of, of trauma, head injuries. And both of them were pretty severe, and, you know, one went to Haywood and immediately was transported to Mission, and the other one put the communication back and forth to the hospital. It was, they called mama in the helicopter, and it went directly to Mission and to get them, because, you know, with head trauma and all, and they needed the neurosurgeons. So, and then you talked about the heart situation, and, you know, time is of the essence when you have that. And sometimes you guys have to make that call out there, you know, get them over there quickly because they've got to have open-heart surgery immediately. And so that's what it's all about. You know, they, they've got the, the experience and the finances and everything to have that major, major health situations that some of our rural, local hospitals don't have.
Report?
It'll report.
Thank you.
And I do know, I'm hoping the administrator can come talk to us from the Haywood County Hospital. I do know that we got a lot of heads and beds. All the beds have been full, so, and the parking lot's full, so that's, that's a good sign for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Next discussion and adjustments to the agenda. Fellow board members, you see any? Okay. We'll move on to consent agenda. Request approval in December 4th, 2017, regular meeting minutes. Any corrections from my board? Additions? Okay, we'll move on. Greg West, 2017 refunds, releases amendments, and discoveries.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to request approval of the November 2017 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. It's pretty much back to business as usual for November. We had a little more activity, as you know, in October and September when the bills go out, but things are back to normal here in November. Nothing out of the ordinary, really.
Okay, any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Mike Matthews, tax collector, will give us an update.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our current collection rate right now, we're at 45.77%. Our current collection rate right now, we're at 45.77%. And our delinquent balance, we're at $1,253,945 in nonsense. Moving right along, it's going well. We've got, we just hired somebody temporarily today to fill in for somebody we've got an old attorney to leave, and things are going well, going smooth. She seemed to have picked up really quickly so far.
Very good.
We're getting ready to get busy.
Yes, next week, next week. Seems like we've got a little bit of jump on it. It happened last year, too. We weren't as busy as we thought we were because we stayed so busy the, you know, the month prior leading into it. And I think that's what we're going to see this time, too. But we're prepared for it, so.
Okay, good. Any idea of what percentage we'll gain right before January 1st?
Right before Jan, it's a big jump. I mean, it's going to be a big jump. I'm not, honestly, I'm not sure right offhand to guess it, but it's usually pretty big. The bulk of it is going to be next week.
Very good. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. See, all business, we have none, so we'll move on.
We're going to have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
Will you accept the consent agenda as presented?
We have a second?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board, you're going to have to keep me straight now.
We're watching, we're watching.
New business. Lynn Collins, request approval of revised makeup of the TDA 1% zip co-subcommittees.
Thank you. I'm here this evening to request a change in the makeup of the TDA 1% zip code subcommittees. And just to give you a little background, this program was implemented in 2008. Legislation was passed in 2007. And I can honestly say that when we went through this and had all the workshops and talked about how it would work out and everything, it was a great idea, but I don't know that anybody had that magic ball and knew exactly how it was going to end up, you know, from year to year. The program has grown tremendously since it first began in 2008, and it has offered some challenges for us. We found out very quickly that each of the zip codes have different needs. It's not one size fits all. And so consequently, we have had some issues with our guidelines, and we look at those on an annual basis and see how we can tweak them and make them better, make them simpler, make it work better for everybody else in each of the zip codes. And then the same thing with our subcommittees. We have made some minor changes over the years to the subcommittees, but this is probably the biggest change that we have asked for to date. It started out with having the zip code subcommittees that collected less than $75,000 with a three-person subcommittee. And then the zip codes that had collected more than $75,000 had a five-person zip code subcommittee. And then we increased that amount to $100,000. But even with that, we have found that in each community throughout the years, we have struggled to find people to serve on these subcommittees. You either, and it really runs the gamut. It can be anything from not having a lot of tourism industry in that particular zip code, so consequently you have trouble finding somebody who's interested in that. It could be a situation where you have some conflict of interest in that the people that you can find who are willing to serve may have conflict of interest with some of the applicants because each one of these is a small community, and each has different organizations that have boards. And, you know, trying to find the people to serve on these committees has been difficult, to say the least. And there are extenuating circumstances, like Waynesville encompasses two zip codes. You've got 28786 and 85. So sometimes it's hard to find somebody from that 85 zip code to serve, even though you want to make sure they're representative, represented on the subcommittee. It's really hard to find somebody, you know, down Jay Creek maybe who wants to serve. And same with Lake June Luska. I mean, theirs is very compact, and trying to find three people who are here on a year-round basis that can serve on this subcommittee. And so we've had circumstances over the years. We, this past year, hired someone to come in and do a study to look at how the TDA operation was going, how that we were utilizing our funding, to look at the makeup of the subcommittees. And the majority of the study actually focused on the 1%. And so we actually have some good recommendations from that study, and one of them really was to simplify these subcommittees. Another issue that we'd had with the subcommittees is the fact that you've got elected or appointed people on the TDA board that represent each of the zip code areas, but those appointed TDA board members are not on the subcommittee. And so that leads to some confusion there. So the recommended change for the makeup of the zip code subcommittees is to take each subcommittee and make it a three-person subcommittee. So one member would be a town representative that is an owner or manager of a tourism-related business and is recommended by the town alderman. One member would be a TDA board member that represents the appropriate zip code. And that way, that TDA board member is involved in all the meetings. They go through the entire process. They have a better understanding of it. And then when it comes to the TDA board for approval, that TDA board member can talk about the conversation that that subcommittee had and how they arrived at the decisions to make the recommendations for funding. And then one member would be a representative of the hospitality industry, being an owner or a manager, from within the appropriate zip code, and once again, recommended by the town alderman. In the case of Lake June Luska, those recommendations would be determined by Lake June Luska management. And then, of course, the Board of Commissioners, you all actually make those appointments for the subcommittees. So I will be happy to answer any questions you have about this.
Go through that one more time, the three designations you are changing to.
Okay.
That's, to me, that's the key.
Yeah, okay. So one member would be a town representative that is an owner or manager of a tourism-related business, recommended by the town alderman. So it could be, if you have a person in town government who is somehow in the tourism industry, it could be a person of town government. Or if it's not, it could be somebody that the town chooses to represent them that is in the tourism industry. One member would be a TDA board member from the appropriate zip code. So in the case of, let's say Maggie Valley and Waynesville, they have more than one TDA board member from that zip code, so they would have to figure out who that designated TDA board member would be. And then one member would be a representative of the hospitality industry, an owner or a manager, from within the appropriate zip code, and that recommendation also goes through the town alderman. And then in the case of Lake June Luska, it would be through their management. So when we say hospitality industry specifically in that light, we would hope that it would be an accommodation person because after all, that's where this money is coming from, is the occupancy tax.
Again, being the Commissioner Representative on the TDA board, I've been very involved in this, and there's been, you know, just like she's talked about, there's been some real struggles getting the necessary people on these 1% subcommittee boards, you know, calling and asking and, you know, trying to find, you know, and like you said, the 28785 really creates some issues sometimes. So this study, this recommendation did come about, and, you know, was fully vetted and discussed among the board members and, you know, elected to move forward on this. And I really think that this is going to make not only a stronger 1% board, but, you know, get a lot more, easier to have people serve, and plus, probably be a lot more thorough board. So with that, I'm going to make the motion we approve.
Any discussion? You know, if we're not completing the subcommittees as they are now, you know, to me, that makes total sense to at least have a complete subcommittee making those decisions instead of one or two people.
And it will be helpful to have a TDA board member on the subcommittee.
And your boards came up with this, you know?
We have a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So Lynn, I guess we need to do the next one. Joel, can we, do we need to do them individually? The...
I think you, somebody can correct me, but I would thank you if you agree with all of them that you can do it all at one, with one motion.
What's the board's pleasure, let Lynn go through and just do them all as a group?
Well, and you know, I'll just add, you know, Chris Corbin has served. He's been a very good member for the town of Waynesville, representing the 20 units or more. Mr. Zenikak, is that correct? We interviewed him last year, and who would he replace? Who's he replacing?
Beth Brown.
Yeah, Beth Brown. She has served all the terms that she can, so she has to go off. And we interviewed him last year and was very impressed with his interview, but we, you know, reinstated Beth back there. And then Gail Mull has represented Canton, and she's been a very good board member. And then we, most of us all know Amy Owens for the town of Waynesville. And so I think these are going to be very strong people that are very interested in Haywood County and tourism and moving it forward. With that, I'll make the motion that we approve that, too.
Second? Have a second? Any discussion, anything? Lynn, you...
This will be some good folks, and we are thrilled that we have a couple of people coming back on the board to serve their second term. And then the new folks that we have coming on board, we're excited about and think this is only going to make the TDA board stronger.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved, we have no nays.
Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas. Good report. Okay, Deputy Jeff Hayes, and I believe you got the boss with you.
Mr. Chairman, there is a correction that they want to make, and he's passing that out to you right now. It will replace the memorandum that is in your file, in your folder.
I need to ask the sheriff something. Maybe I'm getting a little at you, but everywhere I go, I see a sheriff's car. Y'all, have you added that many cars?
Well, we've just, we've been really, really busy. We have moved some of our guys around, and we are trying to do more with less.
You're keeping me slow down, I know that.
And we have been blessed to get some help from the Commissioners over the last four and a half years of my tenure, and I've certainly appreciated everything that y'all have done. I know the citizens of this county appreciate what the Commissioners have done as well, so...
We appreciate what you do.
Gentlemen, I'm here tonight to request the approval and acceptance of a grant award from the United States Department of Justice, from the Office of the Community Oriented Policing Services, COPS program in short, to provide salaries and benefits with partial funding for four deputies for a total of three years. We talked about this grant last year, and we did not get the grant that we had put in for and worked really, really hard on. But we went back to the drawing board this year, and it came back out again. And as I had spoken with the Commissioners back in one of our planning sessions back in February of this year, we talked about the need for more deputies. We've still only have five deputies that are out answering calls on patrol at any one time here in the county.
And this is a large county.
And this is a very large county. And the last time that there was a grant or people added in a situation similar to this was in 1998. So it has been a while. Our call volume is just astronomical. We have, we have done, like I said, a whole lot with really less than what most counties have. The packet of information that you have basically is the same information that we provided for you last February to show you where Haywood County stood when it comes to law enforcement from the sheriff's office as far as answering calls is concerned, and our answering the 911 phones when it comes to our comm center as well, and that relating back out to calls for service. With that being said, this grant would give us one more deputy per shift on the road. It would solve a lot of the problem that I brought to you last year when I said that we needed at least one more deputy per shift. Now, each one of these deputies, each of the four, would have specific responsibilities. That would include helping us, our drug unit, as well as our criminal suppression unit, fight our drug problem here in the county. There is certain requirements that have to be met by each of these deputies that would be out working in these four positions. But the fact remains, whenever that they're not out working on those kind of problems, then they could be out answering calls as well. But let's go ahead and face it, what are most of our calls related to? Most of it is, has to do with our drug issues that we have in our county, just like all of western North Carolina seems to be in that same situation now. Because 85.5% of the inmates that come into our jail already admit to being addicted to either an illegal or an illicit substance of some kind. And so with that being said, we know that our breaking and enterings, our larcenies, a lot of our, all of our property crime just seems to always have a twist to it where that there is some semblance of a drug or alcohol-related issue. We really believe that by the guidelines that the COPS grant has laid out for us as far as fighting this opioid issue, along with the fact that we would have one more deputy per shift, would be of monumental success for us as a county when it comes to being able to answer calls quicker than we do now. And I also try to nip some of this in the bud. I will say this, and we have, we have worked really, really hard in the last four and a half years. Our drug arrest has increased 157%. Our guys are real, guys and girls are really doing a good job. But there again, they seem like there's more of them than they are us. And so we're out here working, working extremely hard to do what needs to be done.
You just made a bunch of arrests, I think.
We did. We had a, we had a three-week operation that we, we took people that was normally out doing other, other jobs, and we, and we really focused hard on some of our houses that we'd gotten complaints from, some of our communities where we'd had problems, and we, those guys really done a great job with that. So we know it can be done, and this right here would certainly help us. With that being said, this grant, the total of the grant together, between what we would put in as well as the federal government, comes to a total of $641,284. But the good part for Haywood County would be the cost to us that first year would be $32,000. $32,064. The cost the second year would be $48,096, and the third-year cost would be $80,160, for a total of $160,000. Whereas the federal government and the COPS program would be pitching in nearly a half a million dollars to help us, and that would be $480,963. So that would, that would, I think that would save our county quite a bit of money and address the issue of us needing that extra man or that extra patrol deputy at the same time.
And the grant starts when, Greg? July 1st?
It actually can start, if you approve this and our county manager signs, signs off on this, we can start this probably as quickly as January the 1st. You know, we're gonna have to go through the hiring process, and we're gonna have to do some things from the sheriff's office as far as personnel is concerned, but this is something that can be done really quickly.
I guess I need to ask Julie, have we identified some funds that we could?
Yes, we have a little bit of contingency left, and if you look at that $32,000 for the first year, that was a full 12 months, I'm assuming, so if we're gonna go from January to June, we'll be half of that. So we will, my plan was to bring a budget amendment back to you on January 2nd.
Okay.
That takes that money from contingency.
Okay.
So, you know, 'cause I was reading the, the application, I guess, that you all sent, you know, and it basically said that retained CHAP-funded positions should be added to your law enforcement budget with the state and our local funds over and above the number of locally funded positions that would have existed in the absence of the award. In your application, your agency was required to affirm that it plans to retain the additional officer positions funded following the expiration of the award and to identify the planned sources of retention funding. So I guess that's what we need to know.
So after the third year, that fourth year, the grant says that we would have to continue to keep these people employed that were in this grant. And there would, so there would be four positions there. But I've got a feeling that in four years, with population continuing to rise here in this county, we're gonna, we're gonna need that regardless.
How much is that? How much would it be for?
Year.
In other words, in the fourth year, it's gonna be three positions times the cost of a position.
It would actually be four positions.
I mean, four positions?
Yes, sir.
So?
How much is a position?
It's $32,064 plus benefits, which would be a total of 100, I'm sorry, $51,386 times four. So that would be four deputies. So $200,000, roughly.
So I guess what I'm asking is, is there's no, I mean, there wasn't any way, I mean, the way you were planning on funding it or whatever was through the tax base?
Yes, there, from what I understand, there is no additional funding.
And there wasn't any to look at, well, you know, we can do this in our budget or whatever?
No, sir.
Okay.
Sheriff, if you don't mind, just for the public's information more than ours, when was it that we went to five deputies? How long ago?
1998.
1998, and I think you'd said that earlier. And do you know from 1998 to the current, how much the call volume's gone up percentage-wise or number-wise?
I can tell you that just since I've become the sheriff, we went from less than 100,000 calls coming in at the comm center each year to over 140,000 calls in just the time since I've been sheriff.
The last four and a half years?
Yes, sir.
Right. I mean, that pretty much tells you right there that another deputy's needed, so.
We are extremely busy.
Maybe two.
Yes, sir.
You'll take one, all right?
Absolutely.
So instead of five, we'd have none for our county?
The four was?
Five, five now.
But you got five per shift.
Yeah.
There's, there's five per shift now that are out patrolling the roads as I speak, and this right here would add one to that.
Okay, I see.
I guess really the way to look at this is we're kinda wading into hiring people and getting some help.
We are.
And really, you know, you figure, well, year three, we're paying 80,000, and really year four, we're paying, just paying another 120, you know, to get that. So I guess that's the way I would look at it, 'cause we've kinda incrementally got into it, which I like to do because you do a little bit, a little bite every year instead of a big chomp. So I think that's a good way to try to hire people.
And if we, and if you approve this, then we're not asking for more money for equipment. We're going to, we're gonna take care of the cars we have and limp those things along and make sure that we have these guys something safe to drive, but we're not asking for, for equipment with this.
So basically, what, that's, that's where you all can do something by using additional stuff, so that, that cost will be absorbed into the, what you've already gone.
Yes, sir.
And, well, you know, we've talked about this and talked about this, and, you know, we pretty well, you know, know that, you know, we tried to do it last year, wasn't able to do it. So, you know, I just, I always hate to put stuff out there and, you know, I mean, of course, it's far enough away that you, you know, you got time to plan for it and all, but, so.
I talked to the sheriff, I guess, last week, me being a car guy. I think there's some things we can do with our vehicles to make them last longer, and I'm sure we'll be talking about some of those things during the budget time. But there are some savings that are out there that I think can make up some of this. Question I did have is after the three-year period, can we go back and apply for a grant again to extend that? Is that an option?
Probably be adding more people then.
Hey, I, I don't know that we can apply for that same kind of grant to pay for what we already have, but there's all kinds of grants out there that we can keep applying for. It may end up being that we may have to actually employ somebody else or another deputy, but we, that's something that our guys really do well. Matt Schell sitting back here on the back row, Matt worked really, really hard on this grant and had done a great job to get this thing ready for us. And he is, he's in the computer many, many times throughout a week looking for things that will help us and save our citizens money, but help us as a sheriff's office get better and continue to do better for our citizens.
Greg, I was just looking at the future, are we gonna have to have more specialized units as we move forward?
Well, I think.
I mean, like a specialized drug unit?
Well, I think we will probably end up having to add more people to our drug unit. You know, we've been very blessed here in this county to have that unified narcotics investigative team where that we've come together and we have that task force that we actually built. And those guys are doing a lot of good work, as you've probably read about in social media and in the newspaper and on television, but in the same breath, hey, we always need more people to help us simply because, you know, there's, there's just, there's a lot for us to do.
I guess my point is, if there's other specialized areas you have to move into, you don't wanna have to pull people off the road, you know?
Absolutely.
Being those units. To me, you're going backwards.
Yes, sir. You're right.
Is it any kind of additional law enforcement personnel, or are you gonna put, are these road deputies?
This, this is a deputy that would be out working the road, but also have the other responsibilities that are listed within that grant criteria. And that, and I'll just go over that really quickly if that's okay. It says that these, these COPS grant employees would assist in the development and implementation of a strategic plan for the Haywood County Sheriff's Office to combat the ongoing opioid abuse in our county. They would also assist in the planning and development of a formal and systematic community engagement and reporting process. This would allow for collection of data surrounding different areas, organizations, and communities throughout the entire county. The data will allow for stronger community engagement and enhance collaboration during periods of problems. We, they're also asking us to provide a community portal on our website, and we have already got that, actually, we just went ahead and added that whenever that we saw that was gonna be one of the criteria. And so we're already getting information from our website nearly daily from people who wants to give us that kind of information. With the COPS grant would also, those employed would be engaged in and assist in the development and organization of the sheriff's county advisory committee. And this advisory group will consist of citizens from throughout Haywood County that represent a broad demographic cross-section. And this group will also discuss community-based problems and work collaboratively to seek solutions to recognize problems, and then, of course, a community engagement reporting process. Now, that will allow for measurement outcomes regarding successes between the sheriff's office and our citizens. So these guys and girls would be, they would be busy out in the community trying to fight the opioid issues a little bit more so than what we are doing now. But in the same breath, as they do that, they're also curbing the breaking and enterings and the larcenies and the thefts that we have because they're all related. If we cut the drug issue out, then we cut the breaking and enterings and the larcenies out. It's that simple.
All right, and you haven't had an increase in the, in the deputies you have on patrol since 1998, is that what you said?
For, for the, for the guys that are out working on patrol in 1998. And that actually came from a COPS grant, according to the guys that's back here and the chief deputy, who was, who told me that that was the last time that there had been an increase.
Now, I don't think there's any question about the call increase or the, or the population as well, and so I guess this probably comes at a pretty good time, comes at a time where we probably need to be reviewing the amount of staff that we have and the, and the road deputies, and if we can add them this way and have some of this cost paid for in a grant, it's better than adding them to our budget entirely, and I think that's probably something you would be asking for anyway.
Well, you know, we talked about that last February at one of the planning meetings, that we really needed that sixth deputy out answering calls and working in this particular area, just as we had discussed. And at least now, in three years' time, the federal government is going to give back to our county $460,000 to help us with that, as opposed to me just coming to you and asking for four deputies and it coming out of taxpayers' pocket directly from here in Haywood County to be funded.
I agree. I agree. We easing into a, to a situation we know we're gonna have to eventually fund anyway.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm all for it. I mean, I think one of our top priorities when we prioritized what we all wanted back during our budget time was the safety of our citizens. So I think there's a lot of areas that we could save some money. Me, of all people, likes to save money, as the board well knows, but this is something I think's well-needed and deserved, so I think that we need to move forward with it and possibly save money elsewhere, so. Bill, thank you for handling the meeting thus far. I appreciate that.
Glad you could join us.
We knew you wouldn't be here.
All right, is any other questions to the sheriff? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve and accept the grant award from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services to provide salaries and benefits partially funding for deputy sheriffs for a total of three years as has been presented by the sheriff.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Then that passes unanimously.
You won't have to come see us this plane.
Thank you. That's right. Hey, that, thank you very, very much. I would like to say I really appreciate Ms. Davis. She, she helped us with this quite a bit, and also Matt Schell sitting back there, Tony Coe sitting back there. Mr. Dove helped us a great deal to work on this, and so did Donna Stewart. And Chief Deputy, of course, we don't go far without him whatsoever, so I just wanted to say thank you and give credit where credit's due. Thank you all very, very much.
Sheriff, just one comment. I told him earlier, but just like for the public to know, seems like on a weekly basis, I hear somebody that compliments our sheriff's department, and I had a couple in my shop today that done that very thing, so I'd like to thank you and your staff for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have request approval to purchase a new detention center transportation van from Waynesville Chrysler Dodge as the lowest responsible, responsive vendor in the amount of $43,057.65 to be paid for from budgeted funds. Chief Deputy Jeff Hanes.
Good evening, commissioners. I bring before you this, this evening, the approval or request the approval for the purchase of a new transportation van from Waynesville Chrysler Dodge as they were the lowest responsible, responsive bidder. After receiving three quotes, Waynesville Chrysler offered that cost. The need for the purchase of this new van for the Haywood County Detention Center will allow for the replacement of a currently aging van with high mileage. We utilize this van each and every day with transportation of inmates and also involuntary commitments. The cost of this, which was previously budgeted or is already budgeted to the county, is
Commissioners, have any questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request as presented by Chief Deputy Jeff Hanes.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Then that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of memorandum of understanding with Haywood Advancement Foundation, the amount of $200,000 for costs associated with the stockpiling of soil at the Jonathan Creek Soil Reclamation Project. Program Administrator David Francis, evening.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Hope everybody's well this evening. Before you use a memorandum of understanding between the Haywood Advancement Foundation and Haywood County. Haywood County and the Advancement Foundation has had a long history of working together. The foundation is a 501(c)(3). I first worked with the foundation back when we were putting the deal together to purchase the old Daco property. Since that time, the county has worked with the foundation on numerous projects, such as the one that you have before you tonight. In order to accomplish everything that we set out to do when we had the chance to purchase the, we didn't purchase the dirt, excuse me, we got the dirt for free, but we got the dirt from Publix that were hauled to Jay Creek Forest. You know, that set into a whole set of wheels that we had to work through with moving to 25,000 cubic yards from Publix down to the Jonathan Creek site. It gave us an opportunity to, you know, repurpose that, that property for economic development, for, put it up for sale, to use it for however the county sees fit. It gave us more opportunities for that property than to keep it into agriculture use that it's presently been in. Because what we've decided to do was move things forward in this county, and this is one of those projects that does move the county forward. And that's why I brought this, you know, project to you, is because it gave us an opportunity to do with something, do something with a piece of property that had been sitting there for a long time. So what happens with the MOU or the memorandum of understanding? It outlines everything that the county needs to do, part of our agreement there. The Advancement Foundation will loan the county $200,000 payable at the end of five years or 2022, at 2% annum per year thereafter. The plan is to use the soil from the public site to raise the site approximately eight acres on the south side above the flood elevation. And when the landfill, and when the field is deposited, we will go then and request from FEMA to have that portion of the property removed out of the flood plain. Also, the four said loan can be repaid at any time, so, you know, we can repay at the end of this fiscal year, we can repay back in two years, or when the county is sold, or we decide to have repurpose the property for something else, we can repurpose, we can repay the proceeds at that time. So that gives us an opportunity and flexibility. When we first started talking about receiving the dirt from Publix, we thought that we had lost the dirt during the budget process, and that's why we didn't put any funds in the budget at the time for the, to move the soil from Publix to the Jonathan Creek site. And so when we had that opportunity to come back, that's what, so we set this, instead of taking the money out of fund balance at that time, this will give us a of taking the money out of fund balance at that time, this will give us an opportunity at the end of June or any other time there to relook at this. And if we want to pay the money back at that time, we can do that as well then. So the $200,000 will go to pay for, you know, the contracting, the engineer, the checking the soil, everything that we've outlined there before. So any questions about the MOU? I'll be glad to answer. Also, Chip Killian was drafted the document for, on behalf of the county and the Haywood Advancement Foundation.
Commissioners, have any questions?
You said eight acres, right?
Be close to eight acres, yeah. Depending on.
Would it be out of flood plain or floodway?
We have the flood, we have the flood plain. The floodways, yeah, there's about six acres there that we won't be able to do anything with that we can do at that time. Yes.
Any questions?
I just think it's good that we get it, the area that's out of the, that's in the flood plain, out of it. This will, this will do that. Then we are compacting the soil to just take the soil there and dump it. It's foolish because then you basically, you got soil that's not compacted and you can't do anything with it on top of. So I think this is a good, a good way to be able to develop the property. We're kind of seizing the opportunity to develop it by getting it out of the flood plain with dirt that's available. So it kind of helps Publix have a place to put it because they were, they're looking for a place, you know, to put dirt. So it's kind of a double, you know, it helps us with our site and it helps them with their site. And we know that's, their site is, is going to be developed and our site, it'll help our site too. So it's kind of, it's a good double, kind of a double hit on getting two, two things done at once.
Yeah. So, you know, the savings that we had on the dirt, you know, we're paying for the hauling. We had some engineering permitting cost. And then, as you said, Ms. Tinsley, is the compacting and grading there, which we'll talk a little bit later, you know, the memorandums approved as well, too.
David, we paid a dollar for each cubic yard for the hauling, is that right?
Correct.
And the rest of the cost is grading, compaction, the testing, the prairie up and engineering, is that right?
Correct.
And the surveying, I guess.
Yeah.
So that's where the 200,000 or the 192 comes from.
Yeah. When we first, when I prepared this for the memorandum, we hadn't got all the bids in yet. So one of the things that, for the compacting, the grading, we're right there at the price that we needed to be. But when we develop that site, it's going to have, you know, we have to put a sediment pond in, a permanent ditching and build a road and some things like that. And we'll, you know, we can talk a little bit about that contract as well, too, if you want to now. But all, all that, all in with everything will be around 245 with everything.
Yeah, the dirt's basically free. It's just making sure that the property is a shovel-ready site.
Yeah. For whatever purpose we decide to use it for. Correct.
And I also appreciate the Haywood Advancement Foundation stepping up and helping us out with it. That helps us, like we were talking about before, we can wade into every year make that payment.
Yeah. They were, they were very helpful to do it. You know, like I said, we've had a long history with working with them from, you know, getting the Daco site, repurposing it, working on developing the Beaver Dam Industrial Park. So we've had a long history of working with them. And I thought it was a good opportunity, you know, for to go back and keep that, that relationship. And they were very happy to do it for us.
Yeah. Brandon and I attended the meeting and they worked with us, you know, very well. Didn't take long for us to discuss it for them to determine this is a good thing to do. And we appreciate that. All right. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Haywood Advancement Foundation, the amount of $200,000 for the costs associated with stockpiling the soil at Jonathan Creek Soil Reclamation Project.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Next, we've got a request approval of a contract with BLE to test and inspect soil at the Jonathan Creek Soil Reclamation Project in the amount of $14,799 to be paid from capital project funds.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. BLE is going to provide the testing for the soils to reach maximum compaction for the 25,000 cubic yards at Jonathan Creek site. This will ensure that the compaction ratios reach where we have those that we need to, to make a shovel-ready site for the Jonathan Creek dirt.
Okay. Have any questions about that? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with BLE to test and inspect the soil at Jonathan Creek Soil Reclamation Project in the amount of $14,799.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Next, we've got a request.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just to note there, that 14,799 is part of that 192. So just so everybody knows that.
Thank you, Brandon. That is right. Request approval of contract with AFCON USA LLC as the most responsible, responsive bidder for the spreading and compaction of soil to the specifications as outlined in the bidding documents dated November 30th, 2017, and a memorandum of understanding dated December 13th, 2017, for the Jonathan Creek Soil Reclamation Project in the amount of $167,802.75.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The county put out for bid for the soil, the soil grading and compaction at the Jonathan Creek site. We had a number of inquiries. The bids were received last Monday. We had to push back the bid from the date that it snowed to last Monday. Mark Cathy from McGill Engineering met with the contractor that next day, and we did some value engineering to work on the price once we received the bids. And the price is reflective, as you, as you see, of the 167,802.75 is reflective of McGill's efforts to reduce the overall cost of the bid. The, what the, this bid is reflective of is the unit pricing. It's the same model that we use for Mooney Cove and for the Crabtree Convenience Center, which with that unit pricing, as you may remember, we realized about, you know, $46,000 in savings at Mooney Cove. Our pricing at Crabtree was only over $216 at that time. So unit pricing, you know, works well about how, you know, the dirt is moved and the different items that they may need in there to get the, the site up and running. The, moving the dirt around was about $3.15 to the compaction. But as I mentioned, there's the grubbing of the site that will have to, that we need to take into account. There's corn stalks and agriculture product on there, a little bit of grass. That corn stalk and about two inches of soil will be moved over to the side to where that we have a good, stable base there. Even though I think that field is about rockier than most gravel roads here in the county, at least, but we have to get the grub off of there and have that dirt compacted there. A sediment pond will be put in, a permanent ditch was, will be fitted out there for the project as well, too. And so there's a little bit of stone and other items in this that we come up with the 167. Any other technical questions or even more detail? Mr. Cathy's here to help with those aspects of the, of the project.
All right. Commissioners, any questions?
The, the dirt that you have to take off the topsoil, basically, what, what do you do with that?
It's going, it's going to be just stockpiled over to the side that we can repurpose.
Will it come back over to the top?
Yeah. No, not on the top. It'll just be moved over to the side for right now.
There'd be quite a bit of that, probably.
Yeah. Just two inches there, as opposed to, you know, we looked at it a little bit going deeper. But after we saw a cut through there, we realized that we only had to go get off that, just that top inches, that top two to get off the organics or anything like that. So hopefully it won't be too big of a pile there and stuff like that. I think it may be more gravel, more rock.
Get a solid base.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a solid base there, yeah, as well, too.
Okay. And I, also, I'd just make a comment for the public. The reason this is moving expeditiously is because that dirt at Publix is going to be moved. So we either want it or we don't. And there's a short timeframe to get it. And so that's why all of these issues have been dealt with here in the last month rather quickly.
With the easement agreement, it was December 15th was where it was our cutoff. You know, Publix understood, you know, the, the process and bureaucracies that we have to jump through and making sure everything's right on their side. I spoke with the Publix folk on Thursday and Friday, and they were very understanding. Once this is approved, then we plan on having a sit-down with AFCON this week and go over the, the schedule of moving the dirt out there. And it will start pretty quick. AFCON is committed to, you know, start working out there tomorrow to start digging the sediment pond out at that point in time tomorrow. That's how, I mean, that's how quick it's moving. So, yeah.
David, you know, right off, I hate to put you on the spot, but if we had to buy the dirt to go into that area, how much would that have cost us?
The, I had a couple of comments, you know, from, at the Haywood Advancement Foundation from Patrick Bradshaw, who's another engineer in Asheville. And he's thought that we were saving roughly about 33% of the cost of the project. So we're probably, you know, looking at, you know, anywhere between seven to eight dollars, even, even more a cubic yard of getting dirt out there and spreading it. So, you know, our costs are way down from that.
Okay.
When we first started talking with Publix, you know, it was a lot more money than the $25,000 for the hauling, you know. So we've done, I think, a very good job of watching after the taxpayers' dollars and, you know, turning in this to a win-win project, as Mr. Tinsley said, you know, for the community. So I think we saved, we actually saved more money than, than what we're spending in a lot of ways.
When we got the dirt for the Francis Farm project, that came, you know, from the 209 DOT project down there, and we paid $4 a cubic yard for it. And that was a deal there. I mean, we.
That was a deal.
It was a real deal. And, because it was going to be eight or nine dollars. So we saved, you know, substantial money there on it. So.
Yeah. So basically, I'm becoming the dirt king. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Don't we use the other one? Don't use the other one.
That it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with AFCON USA LLC as the most responsible, responsive bidder for the spreading and compaction of the soil outlined in the bidding documents dated November 30th, 2017, and the memorandum of understanding dated December 13th, 2017, for the Jonathan Creek Soil Reclamation Project, the amount of
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. And then finally, we'll move to the request approval of the capital project ordinance for the $257,174 to grade and prepare the Jonathan Creek property. So this is the ordinance for the 257, which covers the contract we approved, as well as the cost of the dirt and the BLE testing. Is that right?
It does. It combines, it combines everything you approved tonight with some additional expenses, one that we have already paid, and a few others to complete the project, as David has listed on his, his report. But since we are putting this into a capital project, I added about 5% contingency, just in case. We have $60,000 sitting in economic development that we put there from a sales tax, a particular sales tax, that we are required to use for either economic development or for, for some college-type capital. So we had the 60,000 sitting there. So I've used that 57,174 to move into a transfer into this capital project to put with the $200,000 loan that Haywood Advancement is giving us to come up with the $257,174 capital project. And the effect on the general fund will be that transfer out of the $57,174.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions about that? All right. I'll entertain.
Mr. Chairman, I do. The 57 is what we'll transfer from the general fund. Is that right, Julie?
Yes, that's right.
And then we'll take the 200 from HAF.
200 is the loan. And what I'm doing is I'm, I'm reducing the amount that we had budgeted for economic development in order to increase the amount to transfer out.
Okay.
But it's all within economic development.
That money was already budgeted there to use for some.
The 60,000 that you spoke about, right?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the capital project ordinance for the amount of $257,174 to grade and prepare the Jonathan Creek property to be used for economic development purposes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. You got something else?
I just wanted to tell everybody Merry Christmas and thank you all. And look forward to seeing you all next year. Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And it's also important to note for the record that this is not restricted to economic development. It's for, the repurposing could be for other county uses. So it could be any number of things. It's not just strictly economic development.
Well, hopefully we'll put something out there that develops the economy one way or the other.
That's right.
Anyhow or not.
It's just preparing the property and getting it ready for many options.
You know, if we don't, the bottom line is if we don't improve the property, we'll hold on to the property.
Well, you know, it's, there's a lot of flat ground in the Jonathan Creek community, but a large amount of it is in the flood plain. And it has to have, in order to be usable for anything besides a field, it has to be prepared. And, and that's what we're doing, is we're preparing this property for future usage.
Right. We'll see.
Okay. Do we have anything else for open session? Is there anything, did you guys handle everything properly? I'm sure you did.
Hey, with this group, you can't mess up.
I apologize for my tardiness, but I, I knew that it would be in good hands.
We, we knew that we started that you would be here. So.
All right.
I was hoping.
If that's it for open session, we've got some closed session. Move that we enter into, I'll entertain a motion that we enter into closed session pursuant to the attorney-client privileges, which is North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11a3, and personnel, North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318.11a6.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We are in closed session. All right. We are back after our closed session period. I don't believe you had any action tonight. Would anybody like to have any parting comments? Since it, it is Christmas.
Yeah, we made her.
We did that here in constituent concerns.
Oh.
Since, since car wasn't here earlier.
We're going to all tell everybody Merry Christmas again.
Well, we need to sing, "We wish you a Merry Christmas" to everybody, don't we? Ready? Are you going to sing it, Tim? The commissioners actually sang with me.
The singing commissioners.
I did in the backseat. Not all of us.
Well, this is the time of year that everyone needs to, to remember family and friends and those without.
Those without. Absolutely.
And there are plenty of those. And you, you know, I, I see even more often at the pharmacy, you know, when people pass away. And, you know, we only have so much time on this earth, so we need to make the most of it and do what we can for humanity. And I appreciate all of you all, and I am very sorry for not being here earlier. And for everyone else, I wish you a Merry Christmas. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
We are adjourned.